So please get with Ms. Phillips and staff sooner than later to get, especially because of those red numbers.
Yep.
Okay, so questions, comments from the council. While Ms. Phillips is up here. About what was presented or anything else?
Very well presented and detailed and. Yes, thank you. He makes very complicated stuff very easy to follow and understand. So I appreciate it.
I'd like to thank you for catching.
Yes.
The. What was subsidized from what was originally presented to us to tonight. So Bravo, kudos to the team for figuring that out. Anybody else have anything? Alright, so public hearing item. If there are any comments for or against the adoption of the amended budget, is there anybody here who would like to speak to that? Okay, see none? Anybody online, Will?
There are no hands raised.
Mayor.
Okay, do you have other things that you are going to present beyond? For the other resolutions? Okay, but you do want to discuss any kind of direction. I think. I think we really need you guys to have a conversation with her first so that we can have public discussions on recommendations. Because we saw what their recommendations are and you really need to see them and discuss them with her.
Okay.
And I want to give you kudos also, Jennifer, for, for one thing, getting into the middle of, of a mess, so to speak, and figuring out what needs to be done. And your ability to. To move things to where they need to be and appropriately so. So. You know, thank you for doing that. I'm glad that you're here so that we. Going forward, we have a, a direction that, that will make sure that we remain healthy.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here.
Is it not possible to talk about the recommendations now about what was recommendations made place waiting?
I mean, we spent quite a bit of time on them during the. Are you, are you prepared to speak to all the recommendations in detail?
No, I, I was hopeful that you had. Been noodling over them since the retreat and would initiate a discussion.
Did all those recommendations get to Councilmember Fiorito and Kimpel?
They, they were given the same packet that you were all given, so all of the slides were, which were largely outlined in there. And I, and I would say the, the budget reduction options, that's kind of what we, what, what we've boiled down as to what would be some significant. Helpers for our budget. So I would say the, the slide would be a good place to start.
Okay.
You know, so I think we could probably have a brief conversation around these items tonight.
Okay, well, if you want, if we want to start off on that slide, which is, I think, page 110 in the packet. Let's talk about our town properties. Do you want to review? Do we have a list that you can put up or just want to, do you have, you know what they are?
I do. There's basically two. One is the Old Town Hall that's on Second Street and the other is the property on Golden.
Gold Camp, Gold Camp Road.
Gold Camp Road.
Not Gold Camp Road.
No.
Gold, Gold Canyon Road.
At this time, we have no identified purpose or vision for the property on Old Canyon Road. And that was purchased, I think, last year. And so that would be an opportunity for the council to work with a broker and potentially put that, that property up for sale. That would help our general fund reserve. So those would be monies that would be then put aside. And so if we had that additional monies, that would help in keeping a status quo budget and not dropping below that 20%. And then also the property on Second Street, which is currently leased to the Chamber.
Okay, the Gold Canyon was 800,000-ish?
Yeah.
And so I think we would probably want to look at that one first, given that it's dirt. There's no, there's no use that the town has determined. That it would want to use it for its own purposes, right?
Correct. That's my understanding.
I mean, is that enough? That 800, it doesn't seem like.
Well, the market has gone up.
Oh, since, okay, I just don't know if.
Everything helps.
Everything.
It would be used to help build our reserves for next, you know, so in theory, if it were to sell next year, it would help build our reserves past that 13%.
Yeah, because on that page with the. Page 109.
Do you want me to put it back up?
Sure. I mean, I got it in the packet here, but the 2026 budget share of is us dipping below our reserves from 20.81%. After we amend the budget down to 13.59. And if you were to add 800,000 into that, we'd still probably be below 20%, but not much.
Right. And we also talked about in the financial policies, the economic uncertainty fund or the stability fund as well as an emergency fund. So those aren't funded at this time. So yes.
It's not a bad idea. I just don't know if it's like enough.
Well, yeah, but that's why we have two, well, there's two property, we're starting off with the first suggestion is the properties. And so we have two properties. And the, the first one that would probably be the easiest is the piece of dirt. Right? So. We would probably want to discuss what we want that dirt to be zoned at first, because right now it's commercial.
Yep.
And we. Would want to work with the broker that would be able to determine if, what would go best there.
Yep.
Especially given the limited access off 105, because the county won't let you do direct, a direct ingressing here. So I would, I would guess staff should. Look at the uses potential and engage. Do we have a broker in mind or?
We would likely have to do an RFP process for that.
And then. The Old Town Hall building, I think we have some market information, right? Or we would, we want to start from scratch.
We have lease information on that, but not selling information on that. We would have to look into that.
Okay. And would there be any benefit for us to lease it at market value compared to selling it? Long term, what would be our, what would be the direction that staff would want us to do? I mean, I'd like to see both evaluated. So we have some numbers.
Right. We would need to do more evaluation in order to answer that question.
Would you guys be in agreement to figure those things out?
Yep.
We had, we had that discussion at the, at the meeting. So yeah, I think staff knows what we were talking about.
Yeah. And, and then we're talking about the, the, the one on Second Street, right on the.
Right, right, right.
Because we also looked at potential for. Police department use as well.
Right? No, if it met, did it, when we were discussing that, did that building meet police department use chief?
I don't know if it was complete police department, but I think there was a.
Satellite.
Right, yeah, we, we had, we haven't actually done any evaluation of that yet, but it was just one of the options we came up with, knowing we had that property.
Okay, so I guess look at that, that use too, if it makes sense for the, the town to use it. I mean, there would be no revenue coming from it, but.
Right. So what we talked about too is a lot of our plans for the expansion and needing more space was adding more officers. And as you just saw, we're not adding those three this year. I know the scenario is going forward, even with our declining numbers, aren't, we're not adding more employees. So we might be in a position where if this is the status quo for the time being, we might not even need to use that property. And I would think it'd be a better use if, just from my opinion. If we can get money for that and we don't need it, it's probably the best thing to do.
Alright, so that's the first item, right, on the properties. Second item is evaluate service levels. I think we would probably need to have some detail provided to us on what that looks like.
What is our base, what is our base level requirement?
Well, so the, the point of this is for, to give us direction so that we don't start doing work and we go down a, a road that you have no interest in. And so the question is, do you want us to look at some of those things? And in my next presentation, I have the. What did I name it? The Citizens Service Level Advisory Committee. And, and that would be one of the, the areas that we could, if you wanted to, if you wanted to have the town manager create that, that would be an opportunity for us to look at service levels and we could come back to you. But if you have no interest in looking at service levels, we need to know that too. So that was the point of this bullet to say. Potentially, we do have to look at some of our service levels and see what that looks like. Do you have an appetite for that? And if yes, we would bring that back to you. Potentially, maybe as part of the 26 budget preparation, we could give you some options as to what that might look like in some expense savings.
And that, it, it would take you some months to put those together anyway, and we're not ready to talk about next year's budget.
Right. But if, but if you just said, we're not talking service levels, not interested, we're going to look for other options, that's important for us to know. So if you're interested in that, we would bring those kinds of discussions forward as part of the budget.
I think we probably need to evaluate that somewhat.
I don't think we need to take anything off the table at this point.
And the economy might turn around and things are great, you know, so there's always that option too, right?
But to include that review, to include that review of the base level services or what the requirements are, there should also be discussion on how to educate the public if there are changes. As well, because, you know, we've, we've heard in, I remember past years, people were complaining about even the snow removal. Certain roads, hey, how come they're not doing our road anymore? Just, you know, some of it's lack of awareness on, and lack of promoting. You know, what it is.
And, and that's the idea. Help us. Keep flashing. Help us with, with the, with that education piece as well.
Alright, then I know we talked about during the retreat, the revenue increases. Have we determined? As far as the mill levy went, did we determine what we are allowed to as a council approve as a top end since we've been reducing it over the couple of years?
You stated the 5.0, could have gone to 5.6, I believe that was. If I remember correctly, and that would have brought in just under $200,000 in additional revenue.
So 5.6 is the max? Okay, because I know I was, it was six when I got on council and we reduced it. There was a temporary reduction that I think last year has kept the temporary reduction. Okay. So we could raise it six tenths of a.
It goes through. scenarios and we can bring those to you as part of the, the what I would bring in September are lots of options. And then we can go through those in September that then help me build the budget that I would bring to you for ultimate approval. September is a pretty heavy lift normally in the budget process.
Fees, sales tax and impact fees for sure, which are already in process.
Process, water rates are in process, which doesn't help the general fund, but it's still important for the.
Sure, of course.
Yes.
And we've talked a little bit about parking like at the lake and things like that. That's another option. That I don't know what that would bring in, but I'm sure we could probably guess on that.
But I know that from cleaning up the trash.
Yeah.
This.
Yeah, there was a lot of cars there.
It was, it was definitely packed. And. There was five of us out there filling bags up. Some people who just don't respect our property and it costs us money to maintain it. And so if there was, I would like to evaluate and the council would have to obviously agree, but I think we need to evaluate the mechanism that we would be able to use for citizen versus non-citizen. The usage of that, I, I believe, I think I saw that they started clearing the, the space for the restrooms. And, and how, is that true?
Yeah, they have.
Okay, she answered.
I know in the past, Madeline, I, I don't remember if you remember this conversation, it was probably like last year or the year before. There's the spaces and I don't want to gouge like our, our town people, but there's spaces for like the, the little baseball field off Old Denver. There's two of them. I don't, I think those are free. We don't like charge or ask for like a donation. Do you know, do you remember that conversation?
Um, we do charge for park reservations.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a nominal fee, but it, it is something that will be considered in the fee study. So we'll, when the fee study looks at that kind of information, then we'll bring to you the recommendations.
Perfect. Thank you.
We, we might even be able to ask them to look at parking at the lake too. We'll have to see.
I mean, I don't know, we're going to have a, a sales tax has to be approved by the people. I just.
Well, that's probably the special election, I'm assuming.
Right. Well, the special election you removed from the budget, right? And that was how much? 30, right? Without us having people. Bowing us down to increase the taxes, it seems silly to spend money on an election that would likely lose. Because there's just no appetite right now with the economy being what it is. So I'm glad you removed it, the special election from. Otherwise, you may have another special election that you weren't counting on if we went and put that forward.
Possible.
Huh?
It's possible.
Right.
I'd like to see all other options exhausted before we.
Right, sure, of course. This is a talking point at the moment, but yeah.
This one, the special election I had and was, was thinking about the possibility of the lodging tax again. Just, you know, not any other sales tax, but just the lodging tax.
Right. You need to speak into your mic.
The lodging tax should be revisited, I think.
Well, that's, that's kind of what we were talking about is should we do that this year or wait till next year?
I think we, I think we piggyback because, you know, otherwise we'll be throwing money away for something that won't pass.
Yep.
And, and, and I agree with, with Senna. I think, I don't think people understood.
No.
Fully what the, because we're, we're losing. We're losing money that is being spent in this town.
Right. And Colorado Springs is getting it.
Yes.
They're right next door.
So anyway, enough said.
And then the last one, I think, I think we're all in agreement that having a more community engagement.
Yes.
Regardless of what the committee's for, right? If you think we can get the community involved in these various committees to help participate in dialoguing with the citizens and with staff and representatives from the council, I think that's highly important. And we want to make sure we get them from all sides, right?
Yes, District Two, please get involved.
Right.
Well, if council knows people, please let them know, we'll put out a process, but please be sure to invite people that you would like to be or you think would have an interest in being part of this committee, so.
Correct. So is that enough direction? Okay. Are you good with the discussion, Councilmember Kimpel? Okay, good.
I was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're still needing to vote on something, but.
Yes.
Public hearing item we brought back, no one wanted to discuss for or against. So.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make, make a motion to approve Resolution number 29-2025. A resolution adopting an amended budget for the purposes set forth below for the town monument, town of Monument, Colorado, being, beginning on the first day of January 2025 and ending on the last day of December 2025.
Second.
Motion is second. Motion passes six to zero. And the other two resolutions are not public hearing items, but you've addressed all that already. Okay. Okay.
No, you have to, there, there's two resolutions. Isn't there a second one?
So 30, 2025, that's the.
Appropriation.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to?
No. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Ms. Anderson.
There's nothing else for you to.
Nope.
Okay, so.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 30-2025, a resolution appropriating sums of money to the various funds in the amount set forth below for the town monument, Colorado, beginning on the first day of January 2025 and ending on the last day of December 2025.
Your motion, can you hit your?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. That resolution is six to zero. And last but not least.
This is it. So at the last meeting, we had gone through just as a overview discussion item, the financial policies. They're, they're here in final form for you. I did want to just highlight a couple of items, just again, for clarity and transparency. Under policy number one, I have added, based on the council's feedback, that the town council shall conduct a retreat to review, consider and establish strategic goals that will help guide the development of the annual budget. So that was something we had talked about in the retreat that we're getting that into your policies. And at a minimum, quarterly report, and I wanted to highlight that at a minimum, quarterly report on the status of the general fund budget and trends will be prepared and presented to the town council. This is something you haven't had in, at the council meetings, you are getting a first quarter budget report and then after that, a month of report. So, so you have been receiving those reports. I just think it's important that we present those, especially with the challenges we're going to be having on a quarterly basis to the council at a town council meeting. So you're going to start to see those on your agenda. So I just wanted to highlight that. Under policy two, to maintain the general fund operating reserve with an upper goal of 20%. On policy four, this is the creation of the Citizens Service Levels Advisory Committee. You've talked about that. I'm hearing direction to create that. This would be a committee that is under the Cora, under the Colorado Opens Records Act. So it will have a posted agenda. It will have minutes. It will be open to the public and the public is encouraged to come because these are really important discussions. Under policy six, no less than every five years, the town will conduct a cost of services study. Again, just wanted to highlight, this is already underway. Policy seven, the town shall conduct a review of the development impacts fee at least every three years. Again, just wanted to point out, this is underway. The town manager will annually submit a financially balanced mid-year capital improvement, multi-year capital improvement program for review by the town council. This is also underway. This is something I committed to when you adopted the budget in December.
A question, you said multi-year. But you, can you do multi-year with Tabor?
Five years, yes. We don't, we don't budget the money. So the first year, so when I come to you with 26, it'll be 26 through 30.
Okay.
You'll commit to 26. And the others will be out years, so we can start to plan ahead. And, and that's important because of the impact fees. Until we start planning ahead, we can't charge impact fees because we don't, we don't know what the impacts are because we don't have the projects. Policy nine, the town will account for and maintain a schedule of individual capital assets. That's also underway. Policy 10, the finance director shall provide the town with a quarterly investment report. This is also something you haven't received and I think is important. And so you'll start to see that. Steve Murray will be presenting that. He's the lead on investments. And so that you understand how much money is invested, where it's invested, what you're getting for a return. And you're informed about that, as is the community. Again, the town council may determine that investment earnings shall be swept and deposited into the general fund. Just highlighting again, we did that in 25. Policy 12, water rates will be reviewed in conjunction with the town's annual capital planning and budgeting process. Water rates are under review, so that's in process now. And then this was requested at your meeting, the town council will review and affirm the financial policies contained in this document every six months. So the next presentation will be as part of the proposed budget for the 2026 year. Just wanted to highlight those couple of things.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number 31-2025. A resolution to approve financial policies to ensure the town is capable of adequately funding, providing for those government services desired by the community.
Second.
Your motion is second. And that resolution, motion passes six to zero. Thank you for all the hard work that staff has been putting in for, to this, especially in light of, you know, what you guys found out.
Thank you.
Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here in the public that would like to speak? Will, is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Then we will get to the interim town manager's favorite time of the night. After we close, public comments is closed. Future agenda items.
I don't have any future agenda items. But I do want to say, I do want to say thank you for everyone who did come out and help with the cleanup and the fire department push-in on Saturday. I think it's, I think it's really great that you're out in the community and that you're supporting our other partners in the community as well, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Well, likewise, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, pushing that engine in, many hands make light work for a million and a half dollar fire truck that probably weighs what?
80,000 ton, 80,000 pounds.
And we couldn't have done it without Marco's kids.
Right. Marco's son was there.
Lucian had a blast.
Thanks for that.
And it's really cool looking. It's black and red. Awesome. Very cool. So on the topic of future agenda items, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do for account of vacant seat, we need a resolution for that to, to declare the seat vacant?
That would probably be helpful. I mean, it isn't necessary, but last time what we did is we passed a resolution that declared a vacancy and outlined a process that the council wanted to, to use to fill that vacancy. At that time, it was directing the clerk to make public notice on, in the newspaper on our website. And ask, picking a particular meeting that you wanted people interested in to attend. And prior to that, submitting resumes. Cover letters, letters of interest and affidavits that they have to get notarized that state they meet all the qualifications that the charter outlines.
Okay, so if we gave direction to have a resolution for the next meeting to declare all the things you just said. That would be appropriate?
Yeah, we could do that. The thing that we would need to know is what date you would want interested parties to come to a council meeting, to be present and.
And so.
Ask question, answer questions of.
I think, so if the resolution is, is declares the open seat on the 19th. Is two weeks enough? Time, or do you think it needs longer?
Um, I think that two weeks would be fine. I think we would probably, the charter requires that vacancy to be filled within 60 days. But I think that's still within that timeframe. And I think as long as we avoid the meeting that's closest to the 4th of July, I think that would probably be good.
Okay, so then if the council's in agreement, we would. Well.
And for clarification, the charter requires 90 days and that would be.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Deadline.
Thank you.
So it's either, either we have to appoint or declare a special election in, within the 90 days.
Correct.
So is the council good with interviewing candidates? So is the council good with um interviewing candidates uh, on the sixteenth of June?
Are, are we doing a special election or just, okay, cause you, you mentioned special.
It was an either or. Somebody, or if we can't appoint somebody, we would have to declare a special election within the ninety days.
Nobody signs up. We're gonna have to do a special election.
Okay. Thank you.
So we put this out so that we get applicants.
Okay, so you said to June?
No, sixteen. So next meeting, we would approve the resolution.
Right.
Declaring the vacant seat and. Then staff would begin the process of disseminating that to the public through its various methods. And start collecting the cover letters and the letters of interest and the resumes and then we. I, I assume you would send them to council as they come in, uh, or at least it, i- in one package. Uh, so that we could make the decision and interview people on the sixteenth of June.
We have. Letters of interest included in the packet, uh, at which the candidates were requested to appear.
Okay.
Does that give you enough time?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Do we also want to move the sixteenth to like a five thirty start time because it might? I don't know what else we have on the agenda or to give this time to.
If we have. We have time to figure that out. We're gonna go through it. You, you're all going through the agenda packets, uh, or the agendas when you meet with. With Madeline, so uh, why don't we determine that based on what other levels of things pop up? Since we only have to give twenty four hours notice anyway. Okay, so that's my future agenda item. Any other future agenda items? No? Alright, then we'll move on to council comments. Um, anybody with any council comments? I have one. Due to the unfortunate circumstances that we all experienced in trying to um. Reach emergency contact information for council member Romanello. Um, I would like to suggest to staff to create and disseminate an emergency contact. Uh, information sheet to both the town council and the planning commission. To be held by the human resources department, um, and available for the purposes of contacting. Those listed if, should something come up.
May I suggest human resources and chief of police?
Yeah, I, I, as long as it's under lock and key and. I mean, that, well, the police department, not the chief himself.
That, that town clerk also could keep that information because she does have your information from being. You know, a council member, so.
Okay. I, I just want to find out what's, what would be corable. And not, because my emergency contacts, as far as I'm concerned, need to be very limited. And cannot be corded. So I want to find out.
So I, I think the question is probably coming from our last situation where we were the first ones engaged to try to find people. I think housing the information with human resources is great because I'd just be working with Madeline or town manager to. Get access to it. I don't think we actually have to have it, our own database, but if we needed to make those contacts, we'd have someone we could get in touch with.
But can we find out? If, as long as that's not core, I want to find out how to make it not corable.
We're not making this mandatory, we're making this voluntary. Is that correct?
I think it's voluntary. I mean, we, but short of us passing something. Um, it's a suggestion.
I mean, also like if something were to happen medically during one of our meetings, I would like to know who we should call on your behalf. Not saying it will happen, but could happen.
I, I, I mean, part of it is, I understand it, I just want to make sure that we're not. Creating additional levels of. Work. I understand the situation that took place and the police worked. Well over time. And there's, and everyone was trying to get the information out, but yet there is a process. For. Highway patrol and other agencies to do their job to do that, so we're not, I just don't want to be duplicating all this stuff. When it does, when it's not necessary and I'm, and quite frankly, I, I mean, I appreciate the concern, I, I do. Um, I just want to make sure that it's voluntary and it's not, you know, something that has to be done, or it's not mandatory. When into this elected position.
Yeah, no, I would think it's voluntary.
But I, I do like the idea that it's not, it's protected.
Right, so we have to just find out if that information could be protected.
Core. Yes.
We will look into that for you.
Thank you. Alright, those are all my comments. Any other? Comments from the council?
Uh, one, just to thank the staff for setting everything up. Uh, for the volunteer events and for the finance department for putting together a fantastic product. Um, and I also have um. A question, this was on in front of me. Notice of the twenty twenty five work sessions.
Well, that's left over from a, another meeting that is.
Oh, yeah, cause it was dated thirty one, the thirty first day of December twenty twenty four, and I was like, what?
Yeah, no, sorry, that was just left over from another meeting.
Making sure, thanks.
Okay, if nothing else, then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Alright, alright, we are adjourned.